I think Lisa's not here, so I'll take the attendance. Joe? John? I'm here. Angela is here online. Alex?
Here.
Weston?
Jennifer?
Here.
Lisa's not here. Jane Sargent, we have a new member. We're going to introduce her in a moment, but she's not able to be here tonight. Julie? Pete? Mary? So we are missing two. Yeah, ten minutes. Okay. And so we'll move on to the next item. I'd like to welcome our new board member who obviously could be with us tonight, but couldn't, and that's Jane Sargent. Do you have anything you want to add to that?
Um, I would. So I had the pleasure of meeting Jane, and we welcome her. She is the newest Washington delegate for our board. Jane takes over for Candace, and Jane brings with us her experience as an educator, as well as her passion for this community. Jane was one of the people who were instrumental in bringing some of our opportunities that we have at Ag. She actually helped us make the acquaintance with Little Britches, and it is a partnership that we are thriving with in our agri-science program. So we know that she has a passion for students. She has a passion for education, and I don't think we could ask for two better things when we're talking about board members. So, welcome to Jane.
Very good. At this point, I'll ask for any comments from the public on agenda items. If you are on the screen, I will need you to use the raise hand feature, which can be found under reactions to the far right at the bottom, and raise your hand with the raise hand feature. That way I can see who wants to speak. And I do not see anyone with a raised hand. Okay? So we'll move on to the consent agenda. On that is the minutes of the Board of Education meeting of November 15th, 2021. Does anyone want to take those minutes off of the consent agenda so that we can make any changes to them? You may wish to propose. I do not hear or see on the screen anyone waving at me. So we're going to leave that on those. Those will be deemed adopted. We'll move on to item E, which is a holiday music presentation from our band and choral directors. And my understanding is that we are to go to the auditorium to see this. So we are going to not suspend our meeting, but we're going to change our venue. Is someone taking a laptop or a phone?
So the reason you're seeing two of me on screen right now is that I will be bringing my phone with us, so that way those at home will be able to be entertained by our performance.
Okay?
Tonight, I know that it's not always that we get a chance to play a separate preview concert. We have one song selected for tonight. It's called Colliding Visions. I've been really looking forward to this evening for a long time, especially next week's concert. I know it's a small step, but it's a small step in the right direction, and we're looking forward to sharing the evening with you, and we hope you enjoy our song. Thank you so much. Now, Mr. Parkson is going to do his last number three.
Josh, I'm going to bring you down here for the front, and that way we can look. All right, next set of numbers. I'm going to try to find the theater. Parody Theater. All right. And Molly. And Grace. Don't stop. I'll let it come to you. And we're going to spread you out just a little bit more. So Jake, you're right here. And I just need you guys to arch it out a bit. So you're going to pull it, or pull that corner, or that hair a little bit. This is how we set up very well. A little bit. Keep going. Stop right here. Good. And Jake, we're going to bring it up this way a little bit. Keep going. Right there, honey. Okay, everybody moving forward. So, um, yes, as Mark said, honestly, in January, it will be two years since a group has performed together. They did not sing at all last year. We tried everything to get them singing outside. While it still isn't ideal, they are shining every single day in my classroom, every, every single day, every single one of these students. And one of the things I did this year to kind of reignite was I pulled my high school, I asked my high school students to mentor my eighth grade students so that we can get this program back on speed after not really singing for more than two years for other reasons. And, and they are just rocking it. They're completely knocking, knocking it out of park, and they do so much good work, and I'm so very proud of them. We're missing five people tonight. So actually, if you would like to come to our concert, I said fourteen, if you would love to see you. And there will also be singing, not all of them, but a collection of them, of people singing. The Milford Carol sing on Green on December 18th. So feel free, if you're, if you're in Milford and on the green, it's all lit up with beautiful trees, and we have students here that live in Milford in the Tenshaq. So it's a beautiful town. I prefer some blue lights, but, but regardless, if you're looking to get into the spirit, please join us. We're going to start with Carol of the Bells. Ironically, Carol of the Bells is not originally a carol. It was a Ukrainian folk song that was sung during the New Year. It did not have anything about how the bells or anything to that regard. It's just about welcoming the year and bringing joy. And in 1946, the composer was working with the Edinburgh Orchestra in Boston, and he wrote three votes with words, and I'm getting the chorus singing. And that was taken very carefully. So this is in four parts. If you hear me covering parts, I might end up covering some of the low end. That's what I do. Okay. The pitch, the pitch, the pitch, all set. Okay, three. All right. Oh, and one more thing. You've been doing a heck of a lot of acapella singing because if you hear each other this way. With the masks on, we're over accentuating through the masks as much as we can, and acapella, if you don't have the piano and everything else going on, they can actually hear parts. We can actually sing in four parts. So. All the bells, all singing say, Christmas is here, ready to cheer, two thousand and one. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. All singing to hear words that cheer, come on, we're here. All loving, counting, raising their sound, more than they'll tell. Hee, 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 while people sing songs of the cheer, Christmas is here. Hee, 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 while people sing songs of the cheer, Christmas is here. Merry, 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 merry Christmas, merry, 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 merry Christmas, all loving bells. All singing say, Christmas is here, ready to cheer, two thousand and one. Eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. All singing to hear words that cheer, come on, we're here. All loving, counting, raising their sound, more than they'll tell. Hee, 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 while people sing songs of the cheer, Christmas is here. Hee, 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 while people sing songs of the cheer, Christmas is here. Merry, 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 merry Christmas, merry, 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 merry Christmas. All on the sand, all on the ground, there's a wonderful song to everyone. All on the sand, all on the ground, there's a wonderful song to everyone. Hee, 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 while people sing songs of the cheer, Christmas is here. Hee, 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 while people sing songs of the cheer, Christmas is here. Merry, 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 merry Christmas, merry, 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 merry Christmas. All on the sand, all on the ground, there's a wonderful song to everyone. One more. Say your name, I can hear you, stay where you stand. Songs that smell of land, oh, you must say, "I'm a rock star." Walking in a winter wonderland, somewhere. Sing the songs we belong, walking in a winter wonderland. In the land we can build a snowman, and pretend that he's a person grown. They'll say, "Are you married?" You'll say, "No, man." But you can do the trouble, you're a town. Hee, 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 while the fire, the fire, the fire, the fire, the fire. The face of a brave, the flag shall be raised, walking in a winter wonderland. In the land we can build a snowman, and pretend that he's a circus clown. We'll have lots of fun with this snowman, until the other children knock him down. When it's over, we're all waiting for a parade, for a parade. All the horses, the children, the children, the road will play, the ass will wave. Walking in a winter wonderland, the road will play, the ass will wave. Walking in a winter wonderland, walking in a winter wonderland. They were ten short right now tonight, so, but nonetheless, they have been absolutely wonderful, and I'm so grateful that they came to see me. And they bring joy into my heart every, everything with them. So thank you for your support and your children, and I hope you have a wonderful holiday.
Yeah, thank you, Harveston. Great job, guys. That's amazing. Amazing, amazing, amazing. For those of us who are joining virtually, we are returning back to the library in order to continue the Board of Education meeting.
We're all back. Okay, back into the meeting. The next item is updates on COVID-19 and vaccinations.
Aren't I just like the buzzkill after, after this wonderful performance from our, our students? And, and congratulations to, to Mark Overwitz and to Beth Harveston. They did a wonderful job for us, and it's showcasing and to know all that they came through to do this. So if you'll bear with me, I'm just going to share my screen. We're going to go through the COVID updates on what we have been seeing as of late. And again, we will continue to present as we do every month regarding what we're seeing in the district. And so here are our facts and figures as of today. We did see a couple of cases come through, and I do want to note on this chart, you're going to see there is an extra column this year, which is that we added district-wide and COVID. We have some staff members who go to multiple schools. We've also have some people in central office. And rather than the past few slides, I've had asterisks, and I think that can be misleading. So changing that over and also making certain that we are housing appropriately where we're seeing the spread within the district. That's it. There are districts around us that are seeing, you know, between 11 and 20 cases a day. We are really seeing the majority of our cases are coming from, there is an infected person in the house. The students are put in quarantine in advance, and we are seeing that that's when the students then test positive is while they are in quarantine in their house. So it is house transmission that we are seeing the most of, which is why you're really not seeing too many close contacts. Now, as, as a reminder, we are doing the screen and stay, which is if a student falls within the, what's considered a close contact range, we do have the ability, if it is under very specific conditions, that the student may remain in school as we watch for any symptoms that may arise. With that said, we have yet to have a student who has been put in screen and stay as of yet. So I can't speak to the success of the program. Students where if they do have somebody who has COVID in their house, they're not able to screen and stay under those conditions. They need to quarantine. So that's why you're really not seeing too many close contacts right now at this time. And again, Region 12, I can applaud our staff who has done a really great job of making certain that our students are being cautious of social distancing, making certain mask reminders are out there, and doing our best to make certain that six stays home so they can get better. We want to make certain that we're educating healthy students. With all of that said, I do want to let you know, we do have some athletic updates that are happening. The C I A C has made some adjustments to what's going to happen in winter competition after December 23rd. So after December 23rd, students who are vaccinated will be able to compete without masks on. Now, that is very specific. That means that when they are sitting on the bench, they need to be masked. When they are in practice, they need to be masked. It is those times when they are in active play. It is also that they must be vaccinated. And I will tell you, we assume everybody is not vaccinated until they show proof of vaccination. So it is one where Mr. Pratchi will be working very closely to make certain that we are monitoring this. This is right now tentative, so I don't want everybody thinking that this is all systems go. We're certainly watching for changes in health. And right now, we, the Health Department has blessed this. This is working with the C I A C. This is also us in conversations with other Berkshire League superintendents to make certain that we're all in alignment with how this is going to be run. I also need to let you know that we are going to have spectators again.
Yes.
However, we are requiring social distancing, so both sides of the bleachers will be pulled out this year to make certain we're allowing for our fans to come and enjoy. Masks are required, and what we've decided to do is that there will be an announcement that is made at the beginning of every competition that says if anybody is unmasked, we will halt play. And this is something that we've talked with other, other Berkshire League schools about. And I think what's important is, is that we're not trying to put our coaches, or we are not trying to put anyone in a bad situation to call it out. This is not about a political stance. This is really about the health and safety of our athletes, and especially because they are having the opportunity to be unmasked during this competitive play. We are asking people to allow this to safely occur, which means that spectators need to be masked. For right now, we think that we will be able to monitor the capacity. We, we're not, we're not an awfully big school, but we also know that Rivals Night may take a few more spectators. So having conversations of whether we're going to do pre-sales with that in order to control and manage. But it is one that we're going to, again, with caution and as appropriate, allow for some additional improvements in the competition atmosphere, including making locker rooms available to our athletes. So that concludes my update for today, and at this time, I will open up to any questions people may have about the COVID update. Go ahead, Mary.
Mary.
Maria Horn is going to be our new representative, state representative, and she posted on her Facebook page a schedule for five to 11-year-olds in our region that, that the, that the clinics will be available. One is in Kent on December 8th from 3:30 to 6:30. The other ones are kind of far further away, but if anybody wants to check that out, it's on Maria Horn's Facebook page.
Well, thank you. And just, and thank you for triggering that, because we will continue to notify people of availability, including which pharmacies are servicing different age ranges. But additionally, we are talking to Newtown Health Department to see if we can utilize a mobile clinic up here at Shapaw. That is still, it would be in conjunction with the Griffin Hospital, so stay tuned for more information on that. Again, this is not at this time a requirement, but we certainly, anybody who would like to avail themselves to the vaccination, we want to let them know that this is an opportunity. And also, there are things that are happening in the districts that are limited and may not be available to all students. Things like our course just went to Radio City Music Hall, and Radio City Music Hall requires a vaccination and proof of vaccination, which does limit participation to those who are not yet vaccinated. So if anybody wants to be vaccinated, we certainly want to make certain that they have the opportunities to do that. Thank you for that reminder, Mary.
Other questions? I have a question for you. So do I have this, the, any student participating in the athletics must be vaccinated?
No, they must, if they are going to be unmasked during play, they must be vaccinated.
Okay. All right, thanks. I wanted to be sure of that, because the way it was presented, I was not sure that.
No, they would be able to compete. It is only the vaccinated who would be able to unmask during competitive play.
Okay. Is someone monitoring that to make sure that the unvaccinated are not removing their masks?
Yes, well, that's where.
Kind of hard when a bunch of people are running back and forth.
At that point, see, because it has to be something that is proven and shown, we assume you are not vaccinated unless proof of vaccination is shown.
No, no, but you don't have the proof tattooed on their forehead, so you're not going to.
Well, we're not going to know the competitive who are competing against. We certainly know our own players.
Okay. All right.
But Mr. Pratchi will have a list of the vaccinated students on the other teams, correct? No, so it'll just be our players?
Each team would be responsible for their own players who they're putting out regarding vaccination status, but there is that requirement.
So, so the only one that would know would be the coach of the team?
Correct.
That would be it. Okay.
So, so our system is trust, but don't verify?
We are verifying.
No, you're not verifying the other team. What difference does it make? If the other team, if our team is playing without masks, and the other team are not, they haven't monitored your vaccination carefully, and they're playing without masks, you might as well have nobody have a mask.
I, there's a system that is pretty consistent across C I A C with how they have to verify, so everybody's going through the process as we are as well.
Well, I'm sure they are, but the, again, I think the difficulty, it seems to me, is in trying to pay attention as a coach to what's going on in the game to try to figure out how to coach the kids, to try to figure out how to run the whole thing, and then to try to keep track of who's vaccinated and who's not, I think is a, is a, is a heavy burden. And I just hope we don't have a bunch of sick people as a result. That's all I'm saying. I think, I think I would draw the line differently. But not my call. Okay, anything else? Well, we'll move on to reports and recognition. I've got to tell you, nothing makes me happier than to see children being able to sing again in public and amongst themselves, and to play musical instruments. And just to see that is a, is a breath of fresh air and kindles up some hope that we're going to get through this thing eventually. And I know that this is, we're doing the best we can to get to that point, and unfortunately, it's not quite as much as we'd like, but boy, that was really nice tonight. And I, I want to thank Beth and Mark for the tremendous work that they did in getting their kids to perform for us. I think that's tremendous. Well, another week, another school shooting. This is just a dev. Well, another week, another school shooting. This is just a devastating situation to see what's happened in Michigan. And to see, you know, the way it happened, it just, it just raises a lot of questions. And I will tell you that, you know, in a very short time after this became public and we got more information on what exactly had happened. I was on the phone with the superintendent trying to understand how these things could happen there, why they. Whether they can happen here, why they can't happen here, and what we've done. And I will tell you that. We have run a very, very tight ship here and safety is a big priority and we can't go into the specifics of it, but because we don't say that in public, but. What I can tell you is is that I have satisfied myself that we have. We have in place active protocols that would would try to avoid some of these things happening here, but you know what? We're never 100% safe. And I think we're dependent on, we're dependent on parents to let us know when there's an issue or a problem. We're dependent on a lot of other things that we have in place. And we're dependent on our staff and it's just a very, 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 very hard thing. And I hope one day we can get past these, these problems, but I'm still holding my breath, I think. So on that sad note, I will turn this over to John to do the treasures report.
Yes, good evening. The Finance and Operations. Just had a meeting before this board meeting started. We had the November financials. From the 100th section. A couple of things look out of whack, but it's not as bad as. As it seems. So in the. From the general fund, 113. You're looking at non-certified staff. Minus 112%. That. The reason for that is the hiring of the. The. The ag operations manager, which occurred after that salary was in, you know, the budget. And it's in addition to the budget. 115. Non-certified. Substitutes minus 133%. That is only. A matter of $3,000 shortfall. So. It is, it does seem like a high percentage, but it's not a lot in dollars. And. Item, line item number 960. Is. Is expenses as a result of the lightning strike. It did a lot of damage to the power lines and. And cables going up to the barn. So. That's been remediated and those expenses have been. You know, deducted from the budget. So that was. Minus 48%. I. Don't know the, I guess, the exact. It was $48,000 actually was the cost of that. So. And another positive thing that came out of tonight's meeting. I'm kind of. Spilling the beans over something which is very preliminary, but. There is a suggestion by Nicole. To take some of our. Capital non-recurring dollars. Possibly up to a million dollars and investing it in short-term CDs. So at least we'll have some. You know, some return on the money that we have to have in the bank anyway. So yeah, so I mean, the board is going to be advised. Over the next coming months as to making a decision about whether or not to invest some of our reserves. And make some money on it. And that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Megan? Superintendent's report. Oh, John, one of the things. Of that $48,000 odd thousand dollars will be laid out for the lightning strike expenses. We were expecting to recover all of that from our insurance policy.
You're exactly right. I neglected to state that. It's covered by insurance, so that money will come back to the region.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I'm sorry, Megan.
No, no, it's important. We want to make sure and we know where the money goes. So always interrupt for those moments. I, I first want to say, I mean, we just heard the, the music concerts and you got a snippet. And we're very excited that music is returning in such a wonderful way. And not only is it returning to Chappagh, turns out Chappagh can conquer the world. So a hearty congratulations to Beth Harvison and her choral singers who went to Radio City Music Hall to perform. And if you did not get a chance to see it, it is now posted on YouTube. They did an amazing job. They really did. And kudos to. Ms. Harvison, who had to prepare our students under some challenging circumstances, but still brought it together in such a wonderful display. So. Again, there's, there's nothing that, it's nothing that our staff can't do. I, for, I don't know how many of you were able to, but I hope you got a chance to go to the bazaar last week. So the Chappagh Holiday Bazaar returned. This annual event that brings our community together in such a wonderful way. And yes, it was done a little bit differently. Booths were a little more spread out. We incorporated a, a little bonfire outside and some hot cocoa where people could go and. It actually enhanced the environment. And this is where, again, you, you throw some of the obstacles of COVID and yet. Our, our staff just makes it even more inviting and more wonderful. And. It was a very successful evening. Students came together and. We, we welcome the traditions back safely, but we are welcoming them back and we're very excited about that. So it has been an amazing year for Booth Free School. As you know, they were ranked number one. Elementary school in Connecticut from US News and World Report. And if I don't say that at every board meeting. It'll be shocking because it is just such a wonderful acknowledgement. But in addition, we got a call from the Attorney General who said that. Harvey Booth was apparently quite a progressive visionary. And he had left an endowment to the school. And what he had done was. It was supposed to be given to a teacher of Roxbury and it was supposed to offset their salary. And as long as Booth Free School remained to educating females. As well as being nondenominational. And so we still meet both of those criteria. But it, the endowment is, is a far cry from offsetting the salary of our staff members, but. What we are looking to do is we will be presenting the opportunity. It is approximately $20,000. And we are going to be asking our staff to give us some ideas. And do an allotment at each grade level, so they will be submitting proposals. We want our teachers to have a voice and what we wanted, this is what Harvey had wanted. Is that we were honoring teachers and I can't think of a better way to do that. And so we will be working directly with the Attorney General to make certain that we are meeting all the criteria. But that was a very exciting thing and I cannot wait to hear our teachers' proposals. I think it's going to be an amazing opportunity. I do also want to celebrate that right now. We had Betsy Mintin come at our last board meeting and she was showcasing computer science that is being done. At the elementary schools. But I also want to talk about some of the work that's being done right here at Chappagh. And we know that we've got our project Lead the Way that continues to. Be very dynamic for our students in the robotics program. But I also want to acknowledge, this is the week of hour of code. And Sheila Gambino has really done so much to promote coding. And so right now she's running competitions for our kids and they can win. They can win Amazon gift cards if their name is picked out of the hat as they submit their coding practice that they do. And again. The more we get our students to take learning beyond the classroom and really strive to what is their next level of learning. And if we can celebrate it, it feels like it is a win-win all the way around. Speaking of some win-wins that didn't start off as win-wins, I do want to address last week's relocation of Washington Primary to Chappagh. And Booth Freeze relocation to Burnham. The simple statement is there were no heat in either of the buildings. We ran out of oil at the same time in both buildings. This was due to human error. We had put new tanks in. Both of these schools during the summer and in order to make certain that we ran down the oil that was in the tanks, we took them off of auto fill. And as the new tanks were put in, we filled up those tanks and did not put them back on auto fill. And I can tell you that we have now since fixed, and so there's new procedures in place to make certain that this. Is never repeated. I can also tell you that the tanks we bought are 20-year tanks. So we've, we've got some time on this, but. We're also going to make certain that fail safes are in place. So my apologies to the community for the disruption that this caused. And my deep appreciation to our staff members. Who turned what was a chaotic day into a fantastic learning opportunity. The students for Washington Primary who came to Chappagh. All got time in the barn, so it became a petting zoo day. And they were able to take a tour of Chappagh and. The takeaway from many of our elementary students was they couldn't wait till they get to come to Chappagh every day. The Chappagh teachers made certain that the, the staff at Washington Primary had their own space. That the, that everything kind of circulated around making certain that their guests felt one, you know, welcome and. Our students always rise to a challenge and I have to say it was amazing. Our students at Booth Free School, when I talked to them, they said it. I walked into one of the classrooms and they said, this is Bennett. This is like a field trip. And they absolutely. Made the best of it. Schedules were changed, but no one missed a beat. And again. A credit to our staff, what they continue to overcome and just make magical is, is just really a celebration. And. I also want to take a moment to thank all of our board members. This is our last meeting all together before the holiday break. And I think as, as Greg started this conversation and we think about violence that's in schools. We think about COVID that's out there. We think about how we're trying to redefine schedules. We think about what we're doing for education. And not one of those things would be possible if it wasn't for you and your support. And so just know how much I appreciate you. And I think that's the reason our district continues to get these accolades is because of the support that you give. And so I just wanted to say thank you and I hope you enjoy time with your loved ones during the break. So with that, I'm also going to talk about our appointments. So we have some new faculty coming in. I'd like to welcome. Jennifer Anthony Boak, who is going to be the new educational assistant at Washington Primary School. She began with us today. It's absolutely lovely. We welcome Walter Fowle, who will be our ice hockey coach, doing the co-op program for us for Chappagh Valley School. We welcome Fred Mathis, who will be our middle school basketball coach at Chappagh. And I know he's been active in our community and we are very excited to have him. Join our staff. And we welcome Olivia Moore, who will be our JV girls' basketball coach. And Olivia is also an alumnus, so. We welcome her back. She's just a great role model for our kiddos. And we also, at the end of this, at the end of the month, Dr. Anne Hermans. Will be leaving Chappagh. We wish her well in her future endeavors and. Currently, we have posted for a new agri-science teacher and we will be filling that position so we can transition between. The two educators. And with that, are there any questions about the update?
We'll move on to committee reports and start with curriculum and educational programming. Justin?
Nothing new to report. Our next meeting will be on January 10th of next year.
Okay. Joe, at advance.
I, I also do not have anything new to report. There will not be another committee meeting until. January. I don't, I don't remember the date, but nothing new at this point.
Okay. Finance and operations?
Yes, we just finished our finance meeting and. So I haven't got a chance to formally prepare remarks, but I'm just going to go over my notes from the meeting. The cafeteria plan. We've changed programs this year to a, we've hired, add, advance. To run our program for us has been a major success. Sales have about doubled. While there's still some complaints from parents about why can't we have this or that. I think that on balance, it's working out really good, really well. And we're going to think about reintroducing. Paninis and smoothies in January. And there's some talk about even maybe doing a walk-up deli where you can. You know, say I'd like lettuce, but no tomato on that sandwich. And things of that nature. So that, that is one of the items. We discussed. Elementary. Capital improvements that are going to need to be made. And what we've decided to do. I'm getting out of order here. Well. Is to hire an architect to come in and survey the three schools. And come back with a report to us, not on the short-term items. Don gave us a list of those, but on major long-term items. And how we can do them, in what order we do them, whether we do them all at once, whether we space them out over some time. But anyway, that, that's going to be the capital improvements for the elementary schools. We also went over the $3 million capital budget update. Which now is a $2.5 million capital update. We reduced that down sufficiently significantly. And Don went through each of the items that is going to be included in that. Some that have been completed and some that are still to be done. We did not have enough time to go over the budget proposal, so we're going to have probably a special meeting in early January or later December. To talk about the budgeting process. We did have time to go over the financials, which. John highlighted. When he was referring to numbers, you probably didn't have those, those spreadsheets in front of you because you only have the summary spreadsheets. We get the actually itemized ones, but. The numbers look good. One of the. Spreadsheets we got was for the year 2020-21. While these numbers are unaudited. With the addition of $1.3 million from outside tuition in. We ran the year in a surplus. And not at a deficit, which is always encouraging. And. As John mentioned also, the final thing we discussed was, and Nicole will be presenting this to the committee. And then if the committee approves it, we'll bring it to the board. But currently we've got our money sitting in money market accounts and any of you that have a money market account. Know that the kind of interest rates you're getting on that. And so we're thinking about laddering it into CDs. So that every three months, one, one quarter of the money would come due and we continually roll it over. And if, in case we needed an emergency, you can always. Withdraw from a CD early. There's some penalty associated with it, but not much. Anyway, and that is my report and I'd be willing to take any questions. Great.
Okay, very good. Labor negotiations, I can report to you that we have. An agreement with the clerical and paraprofessional unions that's going to be looked at in executive session. uh, that's going to be uh, looked at in executive session tonight. Um, we are still negotiating uh, with the um, uh, union representing our administrators. Uh, those negotiations are ongoing. Um, strategic long-range planning, Julie?
Uh, yeah, I think I can speak for our whole committee and say that we're thrilled we'll be able to get started in early twenty twenty-two. But we have not had a meeting since our last Board of Ed meeting, which we will do on December twentieth, so not much new to say beyond that.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to new business and updates. Dr. DeBrito, college-level courses at Shapog Valley School.
Good evening, everyone. I have shared my screen, and I'm hopeful that this is visible to everyone. After the first presentation earlier this evening, I tried to fine-tune my vocal cords and bring more music to your ears, although I don't have that gift. Um, but I am happy to provide information regarding our college-level course offerings. College-level courses include advanced placement, or more commonly known as AP courses. Students who take AP courses also take a college board-created AP exam for that specific course. Scores are reported in a range from one to five, and individual colleges determine whether they will provide credit for the course based on student scores. We also determine who will teach AP courses. And teachers attend summer training, usually done at Taft. If they're away in another state, I always try to accommodate and find AP training that is close to where they will be. In addition, we also offer UConn Early College Experience Courses, known as ECE. Students who successfully complete an ECE course actually receive college credit from UConn. And that transcript can be used to transfer the credit to another college or university. Another difference in the UConn offerings is that the specific department at UConn approves who will teach the course. So unlike AP where we can provide training, UConn actually has to approve the instructor. They review the teacher's degrees, they look at transcripts, and they often require a bachelor's or master's in the discipline to be taught. And only UConn-approved instructors can teach EC courses. So I've listed the courses that we offer with their designations. We do have courses that are both AP and ECE. We have courses that are only AP, and we have courses that are only ECE. I've also identified when we began to offer new courses, there were a couple that were offered new this year that support the um, agri-science program. And just further down, I pulled out the actual courses that are from UConn. And special note is that sometimes college board or UConn will make changes to their course offerings. So for example, English Language and Composition, or English Literature and Composition, both at UConn, they're really seminars in writing. Those two courses are going away. Beginning next year, there will be one course, one seminar in writing course. So it's going to look like we're offering less, but we're going to offer the comparable that UConn will have. We don't, we can't determine those particular decisions, but just wanted you to be aware. But super excited that we do keep adding to the list of offerings. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, put it up.
No.
Uh, something that I didn't realize, and I think John, uh, Greg, you pointed it out to me. Getting a placement at a college saves parents money. If you're gonna be able to get through a four-year college uh, in three and a half years because you've got AP credits, you're saving a lot of money. And uh, I think that uh, aside from it being great for the students, uh, it's great for the parents' pocketbook too. So I'd just like to make that comment.
Okay. Anyone else? I'm looking here. Don't see anyone with their hand up, so, okay, thank you very much. And uh, now we'll go on to the Year in Review, another Ben Allen production.
I'm getting faster.
Um, okay, moving on to action items. The first item is to consider, and if appropriate, approve the board meeting schedule for twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. Moved and seconded, uh, is there any discussion? Are there any problematic dates? Is there a July organizational meeting? Yeah, I don't see that.
Nope, it's on the next page, so that's on the uh, so there's one that is.
Oh, that's right, I'm looking at the committee meeting. I'm mistaken, okay.
I appreciate, keep me honest.
No, no, I messed that up. So the November meeting is the week after Thanksgiving?
That's correct.
Okay, further discussion? All those in favor, please say, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. If you're on the computer, make sure you unmute. All those abstaining, okay, that's unanimous, it's ten-nothing. All right, uh, the next action item is to consider if appropriate, approve policies for a second reading and adoption.
All right, this was the heavy lifting, board members. Um, so as shared with you over the last couple of meetings, um, we have shown you what was just the shipment. We have shown you uh, policies that we needed to keep that were in the past in order to make certain that um, policies that shipment didn't have that we needed, including things like our tuition-in program, that we retained those policies. Um, I I am going to say that um, as even as we adopt policies, it does not make them set in stone. However, these are the guiding principles in which we conduct the district. But as we go, if there are things that we find are not working for us, that we need to fix, um, what gets adopted doesn't mean that it is forever. However, I want to make certain that this board feels comfortable with ha- this process. Um, shy of taking apart every policy, in which I have to think Justin Angue because he already did that. Um, so to to say that wholesaling what we have before you is the hybrid. Um, we've shared with the Excel document what happened to different policies. You can see the migration. Um, and so at this point, this is the second reading. And any questions, I want to make certain that you are comfortable um, and that we are doing this in a way that is appropriate for the board, as this is our governing document.
Mary's urging, I did spend quite a few hours one day checking all the policies out. And I wish Lisa was here, but Jennifer is here, and they are correct, both correct. A hundred and eight of these policies comes directly from state statute, federal act, or both. Uh, one comes from the State Department of Education, and six are basically, if you want to call it our own. Um, and Megan is correct also that, um, we as a board has a right to suspend uh, the bylaws or um, administrative, straighter regs. We can change them, but um, for the most part, you know, the lion's share of these policies are regulated by the state or the federal government, so I guess I would have to vote yes.
Okay. Thank you, John. Anyone else? I have a high degree of confidence that these shipment policies are going to be an improvement over what we had before. Um, and I feel good about them. You know, I've reviewed them, and I think they're, I think they'll do his credit. We're going to find a few mistakes as we go through, or something that we don't do with quite the same way, that there may be a few little, even the ones that are required. We have to always look at them to make sure that there's nothing optional added, or something that we don't are comfortable with. But I think over time, we'll we'll get those, those, any bugs like that ironed out. But I think it's a high-quality set of policies. I'm very pleased with it, so.
As another point of reference, just because I want everyone to know this through the line. Um, in every handbook, if digitally linked the policies, the moment that the board adopts new policies, our handbooks are even ready for the switch-over. So I just want you to know that, you know, we're trying to also make this seamless, if this is something that the board feels is appropriate.
All right, I think that's good. Are, are, does anyone have anything further to add or to question, or are we about ready to vote on this? All right, hearing no, seeing no further hands, or hearing nothing further, or well, we need a motion, yes, that's correct. Is someone want to move the adoption of this, of the new policies?
I move that we adopt the new shipment and Goodwood policies as presented to us in um, electronic form.
Right, y- y- you mean also to adopt the the policies in there that are hybrid policies that we have that are our own?
Right.
Not part of shipment.
All policies.
All is presented. Okay, there's a, that's a motion made. Is there a second? Uh, Mary seconds. Uh, further discussion? Uh, can I ask our Boarding Secretary to please take the, call the, the role so we can vote individually?
Of course. Uh, Joe? John?
Yes.
Angela?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Peter? Mary?
Yes.
And our chairman?
Aye.
Oh my God, I'm so sorry, Alex. Alex!
Okay.
Well, I mean, you motioned, so I just sort of assumed, I'm sorry.
All right, well then I, uh, I think it's unanimous. Uh, the policies are approved, and I thank you all for your hard work on reviewing these and becoming comfortable with them.
Thank you.
And I thank the administration for doing a tremendous job of reorganizing the policy uh, arm of the, uh, of the board. And uh, I'm just happy that they're not quite as wordy as the last.
I am too, and I have to, I have to acknowledge Debbie Bliven in this. I, as you saw, she tracked it, she made certain that everything was, so a huge thank you. And she would sit me down when I was kicking and screaming, didn't want to look at another policy and do it. And and Justin, thank you for your thorough review too.
Good, I think, I think that was a great, uh, a great thing that we've done. All right, well, I'm now would like to entertain a motion for going into executive session to discuss the Clerical Paraprofessional Union contract. Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. All those abstaining, please wave your hand or say something. Uh, okay, in that case, we had a two, it's more than two-thirds, so we will go into executive session.